Okay, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
(inaudible)
Welcome, everybody, to our Elton Town meeting. Thank you all for coming. How many's here for the public hearing tonight on the fiscal year? All right. Very good. Thank you. I wanted to mention that today is the 365th day that Mr. Van Rynen and myself have served for the town of Elton during this term. So tomorrow, tomorrow will be our first year in a row. With that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 20, 2015? We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Financial report and dispersment of the funds. Do we have a motion?
Subdue.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I wanted to give a real quick reading of our funds, if I could. Currently, as of today, in our general fund, we have $1,245,537.51. In our water fund, we have $1,927.916.11. One million. What did I say? One thousand? No, there you go. I brought it way down. Sewer fund, we have $7,189,869.44. Our major facility fund, we have $5,986,505.21, for a total of $16,348,828.7. Thank you. I wanted to make everyone aware with the volume of people that we have here tonight, hopefully we'll keep it down. These microphones will pick up all the noise and it creates a lot of chatter for us to hear. So hopefully, when we get an opportunity to speak, please come up to the mic and try to keep the discussion down between yourselves throughout the course of the meeting. Next up, we have a presentation. You got that. Go ahead, Charlie.
You want to have it. Mayor, commissioners, and audience, the young lady who's the recipient of the Elton Town Commissioner Scholarship was a freshman when I was last at Elton High School my last year before I retired. She is graduating with a 3.89 GPA grade point average out of the possible 4-0. She is ranked 25th in a class of 253 students at Elton High School. She's a member of the National Honor Society. She volunteers at Union Hospital. She's had an internship in healthcare with Elton High School, and she plans to attend Cecil College and the Fall to major in occupational therapy. With that being said, I would like to introduce the board and the audience to Lindsey Steinberg.
Come on up here. I'll put you on the top left. First of all, congratulations. Congratulations. I'd like the board to all get a photograph. Come on up here.
Thank you. You went so hard today.
Can we get one of those? Can we take that T-N-R sun and put like the same amount of money on it? All right. Ready? All right. Lot of smiles. Thank you, Lindsey. Very good. It is 7:05, and next on the agenda is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2016 budget introduction. And I want to stress, this is the introduction for the budget. After I introduce it, I'm going to go through a little bit about the budget changes this year, what we're doing, and at that point, the floor will be open up to the public to speak on the budget. And I have a list of folks that want to speak on the budget and just take a few minutes and state your comments, questions, concerns, and we'll have at least two weeks to get them answered to you prior to, hopefully, the adoption at the second or the third meeting in June. So with that, could we have the ... coming up. It's warming up. I see it's slightly warming up. Our proposed budget for 2016, and I'll go through it real quickly with everyone, then we'll go to the highlights of this year's budget. But you know, before I get to that, I do want to say one other thing. It's been 365 days since I've been elected, and there was one commitment that I made to the town of Elton during the campaign run, and that was to reduce the water rates. I am very pleased to state that we did reduce the water rates by 11% during this first year. I'm very proud of it. Secondly, one of the other things that we continue to run on is creating jobs. Let's get some good jobs. Let's work with new businesses. Let's work with existing businesses to try to create more and more jobs. Well, I am pleased here tonight to tell you that working with Trumo Medical, we're going to create 100 new jobs. That's going to take place here within the next start-of-process gene, what would you say? Next several months. We're looking for a projection into next year. Wonderful thing for Trumo, high-paying jobs. I can't get into too much detail about it, but it's a wonderful thing. It tells you the positive motion is moving forward, and a lot of positive things are happening. I was told not to say this one, and I'm not going to say it, but we have another entity in our town that is going to do possibly a 2- to 3-acre expansion of their business. So it is working. It's going to create more jobs, high-paying jobs. So I just want to really stress that I believe a lot of these things are starting to work. The momentum's going in the right way. The economy's coming back. So leading into this, I believe it's working. So I want to tell you, we want to tie up about when we look at the general government budget, we're looking at $1,429,573. Public safety, you'll see, is our biggest chunk of our budget. $6,362,138 goes into the public safety. Our public works department section is $4,182,156. Our parks and rec, things that we do for the people in our community, $481,678. Our debt service on everything that we're putting together for fiscal 2016 will be $448,800. Our economic development, this is an area that we're increasing. I'm increasing it to $200,000, and I got a little presentation I'm going to show you here in a minute. Donations, community promotion, in this budget, we have $18,865 set aside for community donations. And of course, our fire company, the way that we look at it right now will be about $131,735 that will be given to Singly Fire Company around this time next year. So our total general fund expenditures, $13,254,945. When you look at it on the pie chart, you can see exactly how we were saying it. Public safety takes up about 48% of the town's budget. 32% goes to public works. 11% is general government. That's the financing staff. That's the mayor and commissioners. Donations that we give back to the community out of that whole budget is 1%. Our debt service is about 3%. Our parks and rec is right at 4%. And as you can see, economic development, how we promote our town, is at 1%. So on to the next slide. We're proposing for a total of full-time employees for the town for fiscal year 2016, 111 total employees. Currently, I think we're at, how many? I think we're about eight or nine short of that. But over last year, we were even budgeted about the same amount. I think we're adding one additional person from this year from last year, I think is the number. But I'm not 100% sure of that. Okay, go to the next one. Full-time employees, you'll see that 52% of our employee workforce is with public safety, 32% with public works, 15% in general government, and 3% in parks and rec. Couple of the highlights for the budget. These are probably the most important parts that mean anything to anybody, is that we're going to keep the same tax rate as we did in fiscal year 15. That tax rate will be .5856. We're proposing a new quarterly trash collection fee to cover the contract costs of the town of Elton and decrease landfill rebate from the county. Now, I want to really stress that this budget is very conservative, and we're putting some projections out there that we're not 100% sure of these actual costs as we go forth. But I'm making my error on the side of the taxpayer. So included in this proposal, there will be a 69 cents quarterly increase in the trash collection fee, and that will cover the cost of the possible added cost from Cecil County. 69 cents, it's going to cost each of our taxpayers 25 cents additional per month. The proposed salary adjustments in this budget, there'll be a total of 5% total increase to the Elton Police Department sworn officers. Now, that part of the budget, I want to make it very clear that there is a bargaining, collective bargaining or ...
Collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining agreement with the Elton Police Department, and these are fixed numbers. These are going back to that 53% of the budget side for the police department. That's truly somewhat out of our hands. There is an agreement that the taxpayers of the town of Elton voted on collective bargaining, I think in 2007, or 2000? What was it, '05? In 2005, the town of Elton voted in favor of collective bargaining, so these things are kind of etched in stone. Non-police employees, and that's including all of the other employees in the town, will be getting a 5% increase on their salary for this fiscal year. There hasn't been an increase in any of the salaries for any of the employees, I think, since 2011. Is that correct in saying that? Is that the right year?
Not a merit. But it is.
No merit.
Yeah, we've had some cost of living increases, but not an actual salary adjustment. We're recognizing that we're going to have a full staff of 45 sworn police officers for fiscal year 16. Now, I want to stress that we're recognizing that. I think we're currently chief, eight officers short.
That's correct.
And we have another one or two getting ready to retire, or one? Or none?
One.
One for sure.
Yeah.
I wanted to compliment you on your haircut I see there. So the 45 sworn officers that we have, currently we're eight short. I can truly tell you, we will not be at full staff through the course of the year. Just going through the planning and the process and the lie detectors and the physicals, if we are able to fill four of those positions, I think we've accomplished a lot. We're hoping to be at full staff, but I don't believe that we will. But I have to budget for all that salary for all those employees as though that we were going to be fully staffed on July 1. There's no way we're going to be fully staffed on July 1, so when you see the money I'm pulling from the general fund surplus, that's one of the reasons why I have to pull that much, to recognize everyone's going to be fully employed at that point. The Department of Public Works is going to be stressing and doing a reorganization down at the Public Works Department. We're going to add a new mechanic, a couple of part-time maintenance workers. We're going to be switching some positions around. We're reclassifying a couple of positions, and that's going to make up a difference of some dollars. Michelle?
Along with in the budget, as we talked about, there's an allocation of $200,000 for economic development. There's $50,000 for the purchase of new downtown Christmas decorations. That's something that we haven't replaced in years and years and years, and now it's time to do it. Also, in the public works budget includes $70,000 for the East Main Street sidewalk project. That's been something that's been on the books with the town for many years, but it's never been budgeted. We've committed to get that done. There's $50,000 worth of sidewalk grinding that we're going to be doing with a company, I'm sure it'll probably be Precise Concrete. The sidewalk grinding is in areas, if you go out in the front of our building here, you'll see areas that have been ground, and it prevents the tripping hazard. What happens over the years is your sidewalks start to raise or actually to sink, and it could be because of tree roots, it could be settling of the ground. This allows us to grind it even, and it doesn't allow us to have to replace the whole slab of concrete, which is a tremendous savings. We also have put into the budget $50,000 for wayfinding signs. New signage for town of Elton, all of our town, so it would be in an area that you'll be able to locate exactly where you're going at. Loan proceeds in the amount of $406,000 for the purchase of the capital equipment. We got debt service for fiscal year capital at $87,658. The fund balance I need to use in this amount is going to be for $1,732,14. That's approximately 39% of the unassigned fund balance of $4.456 million that we had through the accounting process. Is there a number 15? Let's go to the economic development. Before I open it up, the floor for the public, I promised the board that I'm going to continue to go with, all right, my economic development presentation, and it's for the town of Elton Economic Development Plan. Elton ahead of, heart of the community, it's kind of my theme here a little bit. Our number-one priorities. I want to promote the business district in the town of Elton. We want to try to continue to attract new businesses, assist in existing businesses with expansion plans, servicing the needs of existing businesses. We want to coordinate and promote the business development plans in creation of a volunteer base. Volunteers are very important to the mix of this, and we have to continue to create that base. Can you flip it now to the next one? All right. Strategic plan. We have to have marketing. We have to have promotions. We have to have advertising. We have to increase our software. We have to be up and running with the new, from the website and social media. I think everyone sat here knows how social media works, right? I think there was a large crowd that wouldn't be here if it wasn't for social media tonight. It works. Events and consultations. Under marketing, we've got to look at our branding. Who are we in Elton? Our image, our new tagline, campaign workshops, breakout sessions. We've got to talk about these things. It costs money to identify and find out where our weaknesses are. We also have to know where our strengths are. I believe we know these items as we're starting to move forward, but these are some things that cost money to make it happen. Promotions, flyers, merchandises, giveaways, brochures, events, videos. We have to continue to market ourselves every day to try to bring in and attract new businesses. If we don't do that, we stay status quo, guess what? I can tell you, 10 years from now, it'll be the same old town. We're going to grow little bit by little bit, but we have to do these things, and I continue to say, give me one year with this, and I think that you'll see a world of difference when I'm saying, "Happy anniversary, second year, Commissioner Van Rynen." So on to the next one. Events, some of the events that we will be working with, we'll have the Antique Roadshow, of course, the Small Business Person of the Year, the Elton Citizen of the Year. We're going to continue to have monthly downtown classic car shows. We're going to create the new Elton Festival of the Arts event. We've got music on main. We've got the Memorial Day Parade, which I promise you will be bigger and better than ever to honor our veterans. We've got the National Marriage Day. We've got the palls on the pavement. The Elton Fall Fest, the Halloween Parade, the winter holiday events, which are going to be including the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the old-fashioned Christmas tree, old-fashioned Christmas and the cookie throwdown. I see the winters here, and I have to tell you, those cookies were absolutely fantastic, and I'd like to say during the relay for life, Marjorie had just edged me out because of those cookies. The tasks ahead of us, you know, we have to manage. We have to manage this. We have an entertainment district. We have to make sure that we attend to regular quarterly meetings. We've got to apply for grants. We've got to make sure that we educate everyone with the monthly reports and yearly reports to everyone here at this board. We've got to manage the Main Street program. The town of Elton made a commitment to the state that we're going to continue to work on our Main Street, and there's a five-point approach, you know, promotions, design, organization, economic restructuring. We want to make our town clean, safe, and green. The town of Elton was very fortunate to get a facade grant program. We're going to continue to work with that. We've got to apply for more grants, community merchants, the merchant meetings. We want to listen to the concerns. We want to help with rental assistance with all of our businesses throughout the whole town, and we also want to work on helping property owners sell their properties. Let's get in here who we want. Let's mold this town to what we want to do. And you know, my goal is, is maintaining a strong and diverse economy to further enhance the town of Elton residents' quality of life. I mean, that's the goal here. That is truly the goal that we want to achieve with this program, and it's going to take money to make this happen. Our economic plan, if we plant the seeds, I promise you we'll have success. So that's kind of my plan in a nutshell. It's not a very, if you want more of the nuts and bolts, I can give it to you as you ask, but that's the plan as I see it fit today. There was a few things that I didn't have on my slide. I want to make sure that I tell everyone what we're getting here as far as capital equipment. And I had a sheet up here on my capital equipment, but I'm going to go off the hip. There were several pieces of new trucks for the public works department, I think a total of, Steve, can I ask you how many? Here we go. I got it. Thank you, Mayor Jeff. In fact, I'll start at the top. I'll go with the public service, the police department. We're going to be buying in that capital fund that you saw up there, we're going to be acquiring six new police cars. These are going to be additional vehicles, which we call mobile workstations. Inside these, the equipment inside a police car today, it truly is a mobile unit. There's more information that they can give you in that police car than they can when they come back here to headquarters to get that information. There's also, we're going to budget for body camera system for the police department. Now, I want to stress that the body camera systems are not going to be coming out of the general fund. We're going to be applying for a couple of police grants, but also I want to stress, that's going to come out of the seized fund account. So when we make arrests, the police are able to confiscate dollars from, I'm going to use the word, drug dealers. And that money is put into an account, and once it's forfeited, it becomes property of the town of Elton. We are going to use that money, which I think we have about $170,000 in our forfeited seized fund account, and we're going to take $90,000 of it and put toward the body cameras, which will provide a safer atmosphere for all. I think that the body cameras will not only keep our residents in check where we can all see what's happening, but it's also, will make sure it keeps our police officers in check that we're doing the right thing all the time also. Chief, how many body cameras is that in this system?
35 to 40.
35 to 40 is the number. In the municipal building, we have a building here which is about 20,000 square feet, and one thing that we've been lacking is a floor cleaning piece of equipment, and I think we promised Jimmy for years and years, we're going to get him some equipment. Well, this year I put into the budget $20,000 for floor cleaning equipment, whether it's shampoo or scrubber, polisher, stripper, whatever it may be. I think that he'll be able to do the floors phenomenally in this building. The building inspection, we're going to pick up one additional pickup truck in the public works department, which I started this conversation on. We're going to be ordering two new five-ton dump trucks, four salt spreaders for the F-250 trucks, two new F-350 trucks, a dump trailer, an F-550 dump truck with a plow and salt spreader. This had the chipper, but we removed the chipper off of it. So we removed the chipper. There is no chipper anymore. Is that correct? That's correct. I'm looking at Dan. So we removed that from the budget. That was a $40,000 item that Public Works was able to get the old chipper up and running so we didn't have to have an expense for a new one. We are going to buy a new 48-inch mower, which would be able to cut around our stormwater management ponds. We're going to get a towable air compressor and also a hydraulic metal bending tubing and bender unit. Parks and rec was in need of a SUV that they could move from point A to point B with equipment. We're also going to put in the budget an automated, automatic external defibrillator, some folding chairs and storage carts. Upstairs, we needed a new screen. We're going to put a projector in upstairs, and on the second floor, if no one's ever been upstairs, we've got a beautiful meeting room, and the oven went down. So we're going to put the oven, replace the oven, and where we'd be able to do our prepping for the kitchens. It seems like I'm forgetting something. Was there a second sheet to this? We have cornered in the budget also, we're going to have a downtown speaker system. So from North Street to Main Street and Howard Street, we're going to have speakers on wherever we can put them in place, and we'll be able to have a central location to where if we're having a parade through town or an event through town, everyone will be able to hear what's happening from one location. So we're pretty excited about that. With that, I think I covered everything that I had in the budget, and this is a public hearing on the budget, and I'd like to invite Ms. Marty Blystone of 14 John Adams Lane. She has a comment on the budget.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm going to be quick. I didn't grow up here. I'm what you call a transplant to Elton. Our family moved here September 2003, but nine years ago, this town adopted me. Elton welcomed me, gave me the opportunity to get involved and enveloped me in its history and its present-day charm. Through volunteering, the returns have been a thousand-fold, providing me wonderful friendships, incredible opportunities, and amazing experiences. Long story short, I've invested nine years of my personal money, time, and energy into this town, and I'd like to take this opportunity to express my support for Mayor Al's budget plan. I'm an Alliance Board Member and also hold the position of Elton's Arts and Entertainment District Chairman. I can attest to the difficulties and frustrations my fellow board members and I face working towards promoting and providing activities to boost community pride and encourage economic development with the limited budget we've had to contend with. It is through these activities that we're able to create a draw for visitors to our town, visitors who spend their dollars here and are encouraged to set up their businesses here, thus increasing our overall potential for growth and prosperity. I have seen firsthand what we've been able to accomplish on limited resources, and I'm excited at the prospect of how far we'll be able to take Elton with your support for this budget plan. I respectfully appeal to you, the commissioners, tonight, to vote to accept Mayor Al's budget plan to invest in the bright future of our beautiful town. We are Elton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Littenberg, 105 Wall Street. Come on down.
Good morning, ladies.
Visitors who spend their dollars here and are encouraged to set up their businesses here, thus increasing our overall potential for growth and prosperity. I have seen firsthand what we've been able to accomplish on limited resources, and I'm excited at the prospect of how far we'll be able to take Elton with your support for this budget plan. I respectfully appeal to you, the Commissioners, tonight to vote to accept Mayor Al's budget plan to invest in the bright future of our beautiful town. We are Elton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Littenberg, 105 Wall Street. Come on down.
Good morning, ladies, gentlemen, and Mr. Mayor. A few questions.
There is three, there's three more seats up front, I think, that they had left, if anyone wants to sit up in the front. Thank you. I'm sorry, Bob.
What do you hear about your economic development? Who's going to be administering this money?
There's going to be, the money, there's going to be $100,000 that will be going to the Elton Alliance. And then the other $100,000 is going to be administered as we need it.
You mean, the town council will administer it?
That's correct.
Okay. Everything we heard here about the money was all about the downtown. How about the rest of the town? Are you going to be working with them also?
100%. 100%.
Let's go to page, page two. Under your recreation services charge, is that the money that are brought in through fees with the Parks and Rec?
I'm looking at 348, and the answer is yes. I am going to have to look over. I'm going to hate to look over, Bob, but I'm going to have to look over a little bit. The answer is yes.
Let's go to page 22. Parks and Rec's budget, $481,000 and 678. Salaries are $315,599 for three people, Parks Director, Program Coordinator, Clerk of Position. Sounds like it's an awful lot of money for three people.
Yeah, I believe that that includes all the summer help. And I'm not exactly sure how many summer help people there would be, but it does include the summer.
Summer help includes.
It does. And I, if you're.
Program people too are charged in salaries now. The instructors and the separate programs that have been paid for and contracted.
So they're asked, they're considered town employees just like council is?
Absolutely.
I understand.
They're not full-time with benefits.
Well, this says numerous part-time, doesn't give you any numbers whatsoever on that.
You don't have the number. And how many people come up to the program?
But when you've got, if you're only bringing in $131,000, it looks to me like maybe your Parks and Rec director ought to be soliciting contributions from businesses, vendors, or supply, material, whatever it may be for the town. In the past, Severn Trent's given a large amount of money to one organization, that's a county organization, not the town, that does basically the same thing. Artisan, Ingram, and last and least, but the Elton Gas recently. I think that you ought to be contacting her. You can't ask any money from them because that's soliciting money from them, or whatever it may be, or the old Italian way of doing it. But I think that she should be made aware that they ought to be going after some of this money that's been going out of the town to other parts of the county. Is that noted?
It is well noted. In fact, one of the discussions that we've had is, it's very obvious to me that the Parks and Rec budget doesn't balance at all in their department.
Not a bit.
And that is an absolute goal, to get that to where, in fact, where the revenue is greater than the expenditures in that department. And I think we can get there.
I'm not saying they don't do a good job. I'm not saying that. But I mean, it just seems like there's more money spent than what you're getting back in an economic return. I lost track of where I'm going. All your salaries have all increased. I understand that. Now, on page eight, you and I, Robbie, discussed this earlier.
Yep.
As all back.
And I can't answer that one.
And this rule salaries, $41,006, oh, six, seven, that's one person. The benefits are $28,960, $70,000 total. That doesn't make any sense to me where you couldn't have a vendor come in here and do that a whole lot cheaper.
Well, you're 100%. It's a lot of money. We just recently got the notice it's going to be, this included the 9% increase in health care costs. The benefits for paying for a full-time employee on a family plan is truly 20,000, what was the number? $20,000.
$2,500.
Is the cost, is the cost to the town for a, and I think we're at, the employee pays 15%, but that is truly the cost for a family of, for health care.
Well, if you're, you're short of personnel in Public Works, wouldn't it be feasible to transfer him to Public Works and hire somebody to come in here once a week or twice a week or once a day to do the cleaning? Wouldn't it be cheaper in the long run?
It's, it would be. I can tell you, I've been looking at it, but I will say that he is going full bore here. That employee is here all the time.
I'm not questioning his ability or his work ethic. I'm not questioning that. I'm just, I'm looking at figures.
Yep.
You know, and it looks like it's an awful lot of money. Page 11. I think I know the answer, but I'm not sure. On your personnel, the contracted services, $56,000, is that what you're forming out to that personnel company down in Talson or wherever it may be?
It's our HR department.
Yeah, and that's what you're doing here.
That's correct.
You're doing the work instead of being in-house.
That is correct.
Page eight. Under General Services, municipal buildings. You've got your heat, your electricity, your heat, your natural gas, so-and-so, and so forth. Who pays for the electric, the heat, the gas, and the telephone at the old town hall?
Currently, the town.
The town pays for all that.
That is correct.
Do they collect any rent from anyone?
We don't collect any rent.
Or you're going to?
The game plan is yes. I can tell you that we, in the budget, it has been separated out. The amount of water bills and the sewer bills for every entity in all nonprofits throughout the course of the town, I have it separated. And then we've talked about actually giving, sending a bill, but I will tell you, it's going to wash out with the donation back. It sounds, but they will.
Well, I can see that. You put $200,000 into something and.
It's going to wash itself back out, but the answer is, to answer your question, that entity in that building that you're talking about won't be in that building.
Okay. And what did?
Part of the, you know, I don't really want to get there and step on anyone's toes, but I will tell you this, that part of the plan is, is that the Boys and Girls Club of Elton will not be in the building where they're at.
Owned by the town.
That's correct.
I don't have any, I don't think anybody has any problem with that, your nonprofits not paying a water bill and so and so forth. They really shouldn't have. Okay. Page 21, unless you want to go to this one. Okay, I've already addressed every Parks and Rec. Last year's budget was 11 million somewhat. I discarded my last year's budget, so I couldn't go back and refer to that. But I think that you told me that there was close to a million dollars of last year's budget that wasn't spent.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay, well, if that wasn't spent last year, you're told, that brings that budget down to $10 million. And this budget you've got now is $13 million. Sounds like it's a lot of money between the two.
And I can, I can tell you that I feel that there will probably be, out of the $1.7 million that we're using of that general fund money, I feel extremely comfortable that there's going to be a large portion of it not spent.
Not spent.
Not spent. And from an auditing standpoint, you really don't know what your rainy day fund is until the auditing process ends in June, on June 30th of that fiscal year. But we normally don't find out until about five to six months later of the actual number. And to give you an example, right now, we're using a number of $4.4 million is the number, but I better not go out on a limb to say, I think it's actually going to be higher than that number with the next audit when it comes in.
It looks to me.
I believe it will be. I got my fingers crossed it's higher. Hope, I got hope.
I hear a lot about under, under-employed departments. Well, most of these departments, you didn't spend, with the, with the number of personnel you have this past year, you didn't spend over your overtime. So if you didn't spend over your overtime and you got the same amount of work done, how can you say that you're understaffed? I mean, somebody must be doing something very efficiently, which is a good thing.
I think that we're trying to cut back overtime dramatically.
I'm talking about what you've got here as opposed to last year. I mean, last year, you go back on that, on the worksheet you had, you had actuels and so-and-so for. Most of the overtime was not spent. With the same number of employees, but you keep, they keep asking for more employees, they're always shorthanded, but they still get the same job done without using, going into their overtime. In business, you would think that they'd be using the overtime if they're shorthanded.
Understand.
See what I'm saying? Police vehicles, this is always a question, you never get a real answer on these, okay? Three cars last month, $122,000 came out to $46,000. You had $122,000, $122,000 left over. So you buy three police cars at $46,000 a piece. This year, you got six in the budget, and $178,200, which comes out to $29,700. Are they the same cars or what?
You know, I have to defer the chief to that, but I think you're moving some of the equipment over.
Some of the equipment will be moved over. Some can, I think the sits that we put in for coming up, we will be able to use more of the existing equipment as opposed to the three, a lot of the equipments that were shot, we're not able to use it.
And I wanted to, I'm glad you brought up the police cars. The goal here is to get where the oldest vehicle, I consider it in a fleet, is at a 10-year life span. And currently, by acquiring those three cars and these six cars, we're actually in that 10, we're actually, I think, in year 11, I think our oldest car will be a 2004, I believe is the latest. And the same thing with Public Works. Our goal is to get everything in a cycle so that we can kind of plan five years out to say, okay, here's, here's what we can do in the future. And we could even miss a year. It won't hurt us so bad. But we've had, we still had cars from 199, I think our oldest police car is a '98, I think is what we have now. And in Public Works, it was very similar.
I've got a '78 car still driving.
Yeah.
Anyhow, that's pretty much all I have. I think your budget might be a little inflated, a different thing. The body cameras is a good thing to protect anybody in public service like that, because what's going on in this country today? You can't be heavy to the police. They arrest people, and these people right here in town are on the street festival, they come back, or it's something. And I think that's due to the liberal judges we have or something which has nothing to do with this.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, we've got Mr. Jim Kraus, if he'd like to come say a few words. We've got two former mayors in the house tonight, I've got to say.
Evening.
Who made the former? I guess I'm the former mayor, too.
That's correct, Mayor.
Yes.
You said this term when you, anyway, you weren't here before. You were being guided by a master at that time.
I hear you.
First, a couple of comments that take away a lot of, not a lot, I really, I want to compliment you, Mr. Mayor, on a tremendous presentation of the budget. Whether you like it or don't like it, you provided knowledge. And knowledge is what's very important, which is why we ask questions. It's not to be critical, it's to ask questions. Clarity, for some of us who'd like to look at numbers, it's clarity, okay? With that, I have about three or four things, won't take long. The employees pay approximately percentage-wise, how much are their health benefits now?
15%, is that correct, Ben?
Okay. Looking through the revenue section of the budget, I see nowhere where there's an entry that shows the revenue enters the town's coffers.
How do we currently do that?
It's just an offset to expense.
It's not, no, you have to show it as a revenue in order to have it offset to expense. I'm asking where and it's put.
That's the net, the budget expenses, the net expense to the town, which is net of 85% cost of policy.
Mr. Reed Polk. You have a $13 million budget, okay? You're going to bring in $13 million, and you'd like to spend $13 million. I'm just asking where in the $13 million of revenue is it outlined in these various categories? I'm not questioning that it's not an expense, but you have to, when you have an expense, that's an offset, as you're saying. And I understand that. It should still show as revenue to the town.
It's budgeted as the net expense to the town. It doesn't show the revenue side.
Well, that's, that's not proper fund accounting, sir.
It isn't my experience.
Well, I'll be happy if, I will, I'll come in and show you where it's not. That's, that's, but I, you understand what I'm trying to say?
No, I see where you're going.
Your budget's higher than it is, okay? When you take money from the employees, from anybody, it's got to show as a revenue. And this, and I understand it's a wash, as you pointed out, Mayor, on other issues. Okay, so I'll move along. The, again, Mayor, you mentioned with a lot of your, your various well fallout ideas, ways to move Elton forward, and I think they're tremendous. I'm curious as to, again, looking at budgeting revenues, okay? Is the, how much of, when you say, you mentioned grants several times, okay? How much do you anticipate of the money coming in as revenue? Where is it also in the budget? In other words, I think it's appropriate to speculate you're going to get. You've got experience from past budgets of how much you get in grant money. I don't see a line item in this budget that says income for grants.
And you're correct.
Then I'd like to suggest, I'm not, rather than debate it, let's just, you know, then maybe we ought to take a guess, because it's really money that's going to be, even though it's a wash. It is income in and expense going out.
I will look at it. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, that I'm sure there's an expense, or excuse me, an experience. Everything else, Mr. Mayor, is all positive. And I don't think what I've said is not positive.
No, no, not at all.
I was going to be here, my sole purpose tonight was to talk about jobs. I commend you all to announce that you've got 100 new jobs coming. I challenge you all to make it 200 when you celebrate your second year as mayor this term. Mr. Van Rennen celebrates as a commissioner, and the rest of you are here helping. I'd like to see you as part of your promotions. We saw the presentation a couple of meetings ago about the arts event and so forth, really impressive. I think we should have a welcome bag for all these 100 new employees that are going to come to Elton. And maybe it's a good idea that we could really spend some money there. I'm spending money, let's look out. But, but I'm serious. Why not have a bag that a new person comes as a new employee and that we distribute out to people who are going to live in this community of how to find out things out?
You're right on, you're right on.
If you want to promote Elton, let's do it first class. The other thing I'm going to add, and this is, watch out now, Mayor, but I think in your planning process should begin the thoughts of a parking garage in downtown Elton. I think it's a, I'm going to figure out how to do this nicely. It's very frustrating when you go downtown and you see folks who own, run, rent stores, and their vehicles are parked on Main Street. And I'm not being critical, but I think if we had a facility, it would handle the growth. I think there is space, if you will. We've got to change the reference of down back. We all know where down back is. I mean, it's Howard Street. That could be, you know, with an off light day doing hotels with a little bridge that comes over right to Vane Street and dumps the people right out in downtown Elton. I don't think it's too far out to be thinking about it. I think that it's probably not as expensive as you think it is. And I think the hospitals showed that when they put that garage up and it came in overnight in a whole bunch of pieces and it was like a rector set going together. But I would encourage you to do so. And again, I compliment you, Rob, on a great presentation and to the board to, that 100 jobs is what I want to hear because it's the only way to bring this community back to where there's homes being sold and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Ms. Mary Beth Cole. 107 East Main Street. As she's making her way up here, there was one other, a couple of other things I didn't mention in the budget. One I didn't, the town of Elton entered into an agreement to put a solar panel farm in on Route 40 next to our wastewater treatment plant. We believe in our estimated savings, it's going to save us $130,000 per year in electrical savings. We did not include any of that savings, even though we believe that it'll be up and running by Christmas. I haven't seen any action over there yet at this point, so I think we did the right thing of not putting that additional savings into the budget. But projecting out, if it's done by Christmas, I can tell you there's going to be a $65,000 savings to the town when it comes to the electricity side of the budget. So that's a huge savings that we can talk about. Yes, ma'am, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. I came here tonight, first of all, to say thank you for everything that you guys did to promote this town when Restaurant Impossible came because you guys did an amazing job. And not only am I the benefit of it, but this whole town has been the benefit of it. And what I saw in your proposal, prior to coming tonight, I took the time to actually, even though I can't vote in this town because I don't live here, I'm just a business person, but I'm a taxpaying business person. And it meant a lot to me to go through that budget and look at it, and I was impressed by it. I was impressed by it because I've got people now, every single day, matter of fact, we kept a little log, and we've had 38 visitors since April 22nd that have walked into our store, that have come from greater than 50 miles away to come into this town of Elton. And they're not only coming to Lion's Pharmacy, they're coming to other businesses as well. They're coming to the galleries, they're walking the streets, and they're impressed by our little town. And they love our little town. And I think that where you are taking this town with jobs and economic development is where we need to go in the future. And so I'm here tonight to say that I'm asking each of the commissioners to support your budget and to please vote for it because it's where this town needs to go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Ms. Danielle Carroll. 200 Kentmere. As Danielle is working her way up, there is another, can I say anything about the Possible Hotel? I just went, come on down. But I will say, but now I also wanted to mention that we will have a Fairfield Inn here very shortly also. So I'm throwing these little teasers in as we go. But that's going to be an additional revenue source of income that I did not calculate into the budget also. Come on down, Ms. Danielle.
Thank you. I just really wanted to talk to the board and say I'm very impressed with the way things have been going over the last year. Rob, I think you introduced it, it's got to be months ago, but I love how you disclose where all the dollars sit at the beginning of every meeting. I think it's very important. I think with the proposed budget, it kind of echoes what you and the board have discussed throughout the year. Seems like everything on there is positively proportionate to the needs of the community, whether it be, you know, what's going on in the very now present with the police officers getting their body cameras just to make sure that they're safe as well as the community and what you're doing with the development of the town. I do like that, when I think Mr. Litzemberg had spoken, said that, you know, is this going to be beyond just the main and North Street? You agreed, and I think that's important for the We Are Elton model to include all of the 21921. So I'm just very happy with, you know, the proposed numbers. I think the efficiency of what you're taking from the rainy day fund with what's been historically put back is hopefully going to be sufficient, especially with the new businesses you're bringing in. Thank you, and I hope you guys support the budget.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say tonight about the public hearing on the budget? Hearing done, the public hearing is closed at five minutes to eight. And do we have a motion to accept the fiscal year 2016 budget for introduction?
So vote.
So we got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion about the budget itself for introduction? Hearing done?
I just need, with my first budget, I just need clarification as far as, two weeks from now we vote on either accepting, changing. In the interim, there are changes that are and can be made. This is only introductory, or an introduction of your budget. Is this where I ask questions about your budget before I vote on it? Or is, do I wait for my comments later on as far as my report?
That's a good point. It's only for the introduction point. If there's comments you want to make so that I'm aware of what your concerns are, I'm happy to hear them. And, or you can just wait until the night of the budget to accept it, but that won't give us much time to address them, so I think.
I'll address them, I'll address them now if you want.
Yeah, I think so. Go ahead and address them.
The EDC, let me start there. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me now, sir? Thank you. With the EDC, the extra money that's being generated, if we're giving $100,000 to the Alliance and we're keeping $100 in the slush fund, then the extra money that they make on the parades or anything like that, does that money come back to the town or does the Alliance keep that money?
That would go, that would continue to stay into their fund, into their budget.
And then if we're using 1.7, projection is $1.7 million of the general fund. And I do appreciate the same thing that Danielle said and a couple of other people as far as the breakdown of the money that the town has. With that $16 million, or whatever the case may be, the only part of it that we're allowed to use, though, from like the water fund, the sewage fund or strictly on those things, the rest of the general fund is where we pull most of our money to pay our bills, correct?
That's correct.
So if we have, hopefully, your number's wrong and actually we're going to have 4.7 million is my calculation instead of 4.4. If we use the 1.7, it leaves us with $300, or $3 million. What is your projection, next year's budget, with the increases of salary, the increases of benefits? I see some capital investments that we're not going to have to do again, like some of the dump trucks and some of the, not six police cars, but probably four, three, somewhere in that area. What is the projection of general fund money being pulled then?
It's a very good question. And currently, the Elton area is the area, the town of Elton is in the assessment side. I hate to tell you this, but there'll be an assessment increase from the county for any town of Elton resident. It's going on right now. And projections across the state have been anywhere from 3.5 percent to as high as 13 percent for increased assessments of properties. I feel very strongly they're going to go up, so let's take a conservative number and say that we get a 3 or 4 percent increase on our taxable base. We have $1,400 million of a taxable base, which throws it into about another $300,000, $400,000 to the plus. We'll also be able to receive additional amounts in the personal property tax. It's still going to show at that point that we're going to probably be, if we don't buy any capital equipment next year, we're going to still be probably $300,000 to $400,000 short that we would have to pull from the rainy day fund per se. The goal is, of course, to get to where our expenditures are exact same as our revenues.
Sure.
And that is our goal. And we got, you know, I use the word hope a lot, but we have to hope that this Fairfield Inn is going to be under construction and built. We've got to hope that the Wawa, who is picking up their permit, as we, they actually picked up their permit to start the construction, that that revenues, those revenues are going to help get to that deficit that we have. We need more. I'm not going to get here and tell you that we're not going to need more. And I do project that we're going to have to pull from the rainy day fund. And once we get to that point of our expenditures equaling our revenues, I believe that we have taxed our taxpayers too much money. I continue to say that. We shouldn't have this amount of money in our rainy day fund. And when we have this amount of money, I think right now the state is suggesting, at one time they suggested 25 percent, and I think now the norm is 15 percent. So my goal is to keep the rainy day fund always around 15 percent. And we're still well within that number. I think we're still at 22 or 23 percent. I know, actually, we, at $4 million, still at 33 percent of the rainy day fund. So I hope that, I do have a plan. The goal is, the goal is to get it to where our expenditures and our revenues are the same. I can absolutely sit here and tell everyone tonight that we will have to pull from the rainy day fund next year. And I believe in year three, we won't have to do it anymore.
So your timeline is year three?
Year three.
All right. In grinding the sidewalks, who's going to oversee that? It was $35, it was $35 a cut, wasn't it?
I would say our Department of Public Works will be overseeing that.
Who's going to oversee the EDC?
The, you're using EDC, are you, I'm assuming you're talking about the economic development. The Alliance will be managing themselves, as they've always managed themselves, but I will have a critical role in making sure that we're following through. As I stated before, that if this fails, you're looking at the person that's in control of the failure. But if it succeeds, I can promise you it has to succeed. And you can point all fingers at me one way or the other. Success or not success. But I feel strongly that we're going to pull through and then next year you're going to say, Rob, do you need more money?
Yeah, that sounds like something I would say. For Parks and Rec, you mentioned that you want to balance it and you had plans. What are those plans?
And I'm hesitant only because I think everyone here is aware that, or everyone here at the board is aware that we are looking at a parcel property. And I can't really get into too much details about the parcel property. But the goal is if we move forward with a rec center, this rec center will be a, will be able to generate the amount of money needed to balance the Parks and Rec program. And I wouldn't want to say any more than that until we can get the thumbs up or thumbs down from the board as a group to move forward with this.
All right. And out of sheer curiosity, how much did you stack the deck tonight?
I did not stack the deck tonight at all.
I appreciate that. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. All in favor?
I'd like to abstain, is that okay?
Yeah, you can abstain, yep.
Thank you.
One extension and extension and extension and 48s. Thank you. Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, I'm out of order here.
Yep.
But you have one commissioner make comments here in reference to your budget. Or back to the other commissioner. Do I have anything inside?
Listen, this is, you can ask that question at the public, or at the public comment time. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next up, well, let me, I will answer, I will answer that for you. I will answer that for you. I have received emails from my fellow commissioners and comments from my fellow commissioners about my budget. I have not received any from Commissioner Van Rennen, other than right now speaking in front of the public, whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, but I have heard from all three of the other commissioners. They haven't brought it out, but they brought it to me. They have brought the information to me. So I hope, hopefully that may have answered it. But they have given me the information, their comments and questions about the budget. All right, we've got, next on the agenda, we've got the Locust Lane Sidewalk Feasibility Study from Will MacGo. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing great. We're going to be a couple of seconds doing a little bit of technical up here, real quick. And I do apologize for all that want to come for the public comment portion tonight. We're almost there, we're almost there. Okay, we ready? Let's wait for DJ, real quick. Yeah, they told us. Should I say anything about the management change in the September? Are you well prepared tonight? All right, we're ready to go. The floor is yours. I could ask everyone to quiet down a little bit so we can hear the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Samika Graham from Will MacGo and I'm here seeking adoption of the Locust Lane Sidewalk.
Pull that mic up closer to you, dear.
The Locust Lane Sidewalk feasibility study. But before you move to take action, I have a very brief presentation. I wanted to give you all a recap of the study and also to present the final recommendation of the study. Thank you. So if you all recall, Locust, the sidewalk feasibility study is looking at a section of Locust Lane in between East High Street and Main Street. We are doing this as, it was based on a request from the town. We've been working with a consultant called RKNK. We are looking at design standards. We've developed some feasible alternatives. We have preliminary cost estimates, which was a part of the scope. And you have before you a final draft of the report. So really, the main purpose here is to provide a solution to some of the obvious problems between East High Street and Main Street. As you can see in the pictures, there are a number of utility poles that impede the sidewalk. The sidewalk is, it's only 40 inches and it doesn't have an upright curb, so that makes it non-ADA compliant. So really what this project is doing is looking at some feasible alternatives to make this section of sidewalk more accessible and also safe.
What's wrong with the telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalk?
Exactly. I touched on it there. It's not necessarily the poles are the issue. It's really the poles and the width of the sidewalk is the challenge there. So we, I provided you a presentation back in April and we talked about some of these items. We looked at four different improvement measures for this project. And each of these measures, they really address a particular constraint within the study area. The first looks at sections of the sidewalk where we The first looks at sections of the sidewalk where we have existing walls to create a challenge for walking. There are some sections, actually, four different points where the utility poles are a problem. And then there's one particular section in the study area that has an existing wall in the utilities. So for each of these examples, we have an improvement measure. And then the fourth is to provide passing zones, and you'll see in each of the options, or actually, if you recall from the previous presentation, that each of the options do include passing zones. So those sidewalk improvement measures have been incorporated into, we have four different proposed alternatives. These have not changed since the previous presentation, but I just wanted to put them up here, just a quick recap. The first option is to narrow the roadway. We do have a little bit of width to reconfigure the sidewalk to provide a five-foot wide sidewalk, which is preferred from the federal agency standpoint. And each of the options would include passing zones, as I just mentioned, but also improvements to one of the ramps that currently has a utility pole impeding it, and it will include some crosswalks that are lacking along Main Street. The second proposal is to accommodate the utilities, and that just looks at how can we provide a five-foot wide sidewalk without having to shift back or to underground the utilities? And some of the considerations with that includes going slightly outside of the public right-of-way. And as you can see here, it just summarizes improvement measure three and four that would be incorporated. The third option is to relocate the utilities. That would be to shift the utilities slightly back outside of the public right-of-way, to provide the five-foot wide sidewalk, and also to upgrade the cross, to upgrade the ramps using some of the existing driveways. 2A and 23, it's simply an extension of option two and three. So as I mentioned, we are looking at the section between High Street and Main Street, but in this option, it would be an extension up to, up to the Friendship Heights community up towards Mitchell Street. The benefit with this option is that it completes a gap that exists further north of our original study area. And then the final option is to expand the sidewalk on the west side of Locust Lane. However, because of the right-of-way's constraint, we know that this is not an option that we would pursue any further, but we wanted to show it, just to express that we did consider this as an option. So again, those options have not changed since the previous presentation, but what has changed slightly is the preliminary cost estimates. Previously, we had not looked at a cost estimate for the first option, which is to narrow the roadway, because we knew, just looking at it, that it would be the most expensive, and it would also be the most disruptive in terms of construction. But you all had expressed, this board had expressed some interest in looking at the cost for narrowing the roadway. And so we do have a figure for that. We also refined the figures for options 2, 2, 3, 2A and 2, 2, 3, 2A and 3A. And those figures mainly changed because we'd, previously, we were using some figures from other sidewalk projects that have been conducted in Maryland. But these current figures actually reflect SHA's unit costs that was updated in January of 2015. The cost estimates at then do not include the cost to relocate the utility poles. It doesn't include the easements. Since our last meeting, we did try, we did, myself and Public Works, we did try to reach out to the utility companies to try and get a cost estimate for what the cost, what it would entail to relocate the utilities. I did follow up with them again this week, and they said that they have begun to gather some information about the location of the project, but they would have to do a site visit, and they would hopefully get back to the town sometime in the near future. How, oh, one more, it's okay. However, our final recommendation for the study is for the town to pursue option one, which is to accommodate the utilities. This chart just summarizes which ones we would recommend, and we would also recommend to extend the project north of High Street that would connect into the Locust Lane, East High Street, TAP project that's currently underway. So together, these two projects would connect two neighborhoods through downtown. This option would fully meet the goals of the project, which is to improve accessibility and safety, and also to improve the pedestrian network in the town in general. We did look at some evaluation criteria before we made this recommendation. Part of that also included public input. We did have a public workshop last month that was actually held before, it was a two-hour open-house workshop that was held prior to the town meeting. We did not have anyone that opposed the project, and there was no opposition to any of the options.
That was one of the questions I wanted to ask you, even if this is a feasibility study, a proposal, did you talk to any of the residents on that street during your study? And did you get any feedback from any of them?
We sent out a direct mailing to all the affected property owners along the study area, and we also included all the residents within the surrounding area. We only had five people actually showed up. We did have some people, some residents directly in that block that did reach out to the town and myself. We answered their questions. They, they felt comfortable, once their questions were answered, with the project. Some of the concerns, or one of the concerns was with option one, to narrow the roadway, there were some concerns about having vehicles being able, being able to turn on a roadway that's already narrow. But one of the things that we would look at is the radius of the corner curve, so that was something that would be addressed.
One of the concerns were, I know there's at least three driveways that are questionable about doing any work. It's hard for them to go up in their driveways and come out safely, and that's one of the reasons I've asked that question. Unless they're involved with the meetings, and there was some kind of special letter given to them, knowing that this work is being, taking place, a lot of people don't ask questions where a person's doing a survey, but I want to make sure that they are fully aware of what's going on before anything else takes place with that.
Yeah. Well, the, again, the option that we're recommending, it won't have any, the only work that would take place with the driveways is just making it ADA compliant, so that's to be a 2% slope with the adjacent part of the sidewalk. So that's really the only work that will be done with the driveways with the, with the option to accommodate the utilities. So our next step for the town is to pursue funding to implement the project, and the town has actually already taken a step to do that. The town submitted a submission for the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is currently funding the other project that's in the same area. So just looking back quickly on where we've been and where we are now, this project, we've had a number of project meetings. As I mentioned before, we had a presentation to this board. Because it is a study funded through the Will MacGo budget, it typically goes through our process, which is through our Technical Advisory Committee, as well as our Non-Motivized Committee. So there have been a number of professionals looking into this feasibility study. Again, I'm here today seeking adoption of it, and it will go before our council for an endorsement, and it would just support the action that this board has taken this evening. I will entertain any questions.
You answered them. The only comment that I, I had before was, would it make sense to relocate those lines? And of course, we, we know that the cost of that could be very high, but I had spoke to Linda Burris, and I'm working on that side of it, and she's our representative with Delmarva, and she said there may be an opportunity that they may partner with us in that side of it. So that's something I want to make you aware that there's an option there for us, but until we get a no from them, then I think we would go with the recommendation.
I think one of the poles was Delmarva Power, but the other three or four were Verizon.
No, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, then that changes the whole game, Mayor. Any comments from the board? Harry Mudd, thank you so much for bringing that into us tonight. Do you need a recommended, you need a recommendation, right? Do we have a motion to approve the plan as presented? Is that what we're looking at? Yeah, you can hesitate. Do we have a motion? Got a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, or you got?
No, I just wanted to ask Jeanne, has the zoning been involved with the planning and everything?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the, this project was actually presented to Will MacGo, asking assistance from Will MacGo to do this study through their UPW, the Unified Planning Work Program. This is a $10,000 study that Will MacGo provided to the town as a grant, as a, as a grant, in-house work. And so I, myself, and KCI, Public Works, have all been working closely with Will MacGo on this project.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Any other questions? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, very good. We got a couple proclamations. The first proclamation is for the Elton High School Graduation Day, whereas Elton High School at its present location was dedicated in 1958, whereas the first graduation ceremony was held in 1959, and whereas for 56 years, the teachers and staff of Elton High have served our community, preparing students to become productive adults, and whereas former students now parents and grandparents themselves watch with pride as their children and grandchildren take their next steps into the world. Now therefore, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton do hereby proclaim June 12th, 2015, Elton High School Graduation Day. Do we have a motion to accept this proclamation? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the proclamation? All in favor? Aye. All right. Our second proclamation, and I'll talk about this after we read the proclamation. This is actually a certificate of recognition for Mr. William Hoppy Hammond. Whereas William Hoppy Hammond's daily walking routine includes a stop at the bridge at Route 213, where he shares his enthusiasm for life by sharing a smile and a friendly wave to passing motorists. And whereas drivers and passerbyers have made him an important part of the day, looking forward to seeing him at his post, and whereas Hoppy demonstrates that one person can make a difference in another's day, simply with a smile and a friendly wave. Now therefore, the mayor and commissioners of Elton hereby proclaim June 5th, 2015, as Hoppy Hammond Day. Do we have a motion to accept? We have a second? Any discussion on the proclamation? I want to say that in this, on Friday at 4 o'clock, Commissioner Givens will, is that correct? You're going to bring him to the bridge?
I'm going to bring him to the bridge.
All right. Commissioner Givens is going to bring him to the bridge on, certainly on Bridge Street. We're going to unveil a plaque for Hoppy as our ambassador of the town of Elton, and I welcome everyone here that's in this room tonight to come and wave with us on the bridge, and we're all going to be part of the Hoppy Wave that day. He is not here. He is not here. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Lou, you're on. Nothing? Okay, very good. On my report, we, we have a, we have a vacancy on the Board of Appeals, and on that vacancy, I'm going to ask the board to give me some names to fill a position on the Board of Appeals. We'll go through the same process we did. But we currently have an alternate, and the reason why you have an alternate on the board is so that when a member is no longer a member, you move forward and appoint that alternate in that position. And I'd like to ask the town to approve Jim Cooney for moving from the alternate member to a permanent member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion to approve that? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Jim Cooney taking over as a full-time member instead of an alternate? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Jim, I see you back here in the background. Thank you for serving. And just because Jim has the same hairline as a couple of us up here, doesn't mean we're related. Okay. The Relay for Life update. A couple weeks ago, I challenged Chaney Richardson, and our receptionist at Town Hall, to help put a team in for the town of Elton. We got in at the last minute, which was about maybe three weeks prior to the event, but the We Are Elton team, we put a team in, we had a goal of $1,000. We all participated in it, and to make a long story short, the town of Elton raised $2,324. All right, we got another hundred and something dollars added to that total. But what a wonderful evening it was, and our goal next year, we finished in the top 10. Next year, our goal was to finish in the top 5. This is going to be an event, and I'm going to, I'm going to show with a lot of passion. I know we have folks that get emotional and passionate about their calls. This is going to be one cause that I'm going to be really involved in for the Relay for Life, and I want all of our community, I'm going to ask everyone to get involved in this, and let's, I think ATK won this, so we're going to beat them, beat them out. So that's our goal, and we want to raise money for cancer awareness and for folks that, I think that disease has touched probably everyone in this room to one degree or another. All righty, let's see. I wanted to mention that the, there's a, at the Historical Society Celebration, which is on, since this Saturday, or? It's this Saturday, June 6th, is going to be celebrating Cecil County's 341st anniversary of Deanna County. So hopefully, maybe some members can join the town of Elton and help celebrate in the county for the 341st birthday. I will be there. I wanted to mention also, the town of Elton received today, the Elton Police Department has been nominated by the Comptroller of Maryland to receive the William Donald Chaffer's Lifetime Commitment Award of Helping People. This is a great honor for the town of Elton. The Comptroller will be in Elton on Friday, June 26th, at 12:30 to present this fantastic award to the Elton Police Department, and I hope that all can attend. That will be at 12:30, and it's the award for our police department. It was a fantastic award, so. Chief, I know you're doing some fantastic things. I mentioned about the creation of jobs at Trumo Medical. I wanted to mention that within the next 30 days, they will be recruiting 20 new positions, a mix of mostly production and support staff. So if anyone knows of anyone that's looking for work in that field, I would go to Trumo. They're going to be hiring the first 20 here within the next couple of weeks, so that's some good news. So I think, I mentioned 100, but it could be as many as, what's it?
It's in addition to.
In addition to, yes.
120.
So it was actually 120 total jobs. So Mayor, I'm working on that 200, so we're at 120. Lou, where do we stand at in regards to the ordinance on the neighborhood, or the Elton Guarantee Program? I started it.
I started it, but I haven't concluded it yet.
Okay. Is there any questions or concerns that you have at this point in regards to it? Okay, thank you. A couple more things than I had here. Gene Minter and myself have been working, actually Gene more so than me, on the mitigation grants. And one of the goals that I have for our town is any properties that are currently in the floodway, flood plain, that would like to see if they can be bought out, quite frankly. We're working on that funding source to make some of those things happen. And I know that there's a lot of properties on Bridge Street that would absolutely qualify. And I would love for every one of them to qualify and want to be part of this, because that would open up a beautiful scenic walk area between downtown into our Big Elton Mall. So I'm encouraging all those parties to participate in that, and we would help those businesses relocate to another location here in our town. The Historical Society thing that I should have mentioned was at 2:00, right before the Belmont Race. So everyone can attend the historical celebration, and it may go away that way. I received a couple comments about the loan program, and I have to make everyone aware of this. I had one resident that was not in favor of the $200,000 for economic development, and also was not supportive of the guarantee program. So I wanted to make everyone aware, I did receive an email of non-support for both of those programs. But I also received support from, and former Mayor Larry Trusslow of Northeast actually stated that this was something that the town of Northeast did during his term of mayor. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew this wasn't nothing new that was going on. So I wanted to get that comment in, but that was a message that he sent to me. I'm not sure of any of the details of that program back then, but it was sent to me from him. Along with that, I want to go ahead and, I'm gonna give the, certainly when we open up the floor to the public to talk about the town's position and what had happened in regards to our feral cats, you'll have an opportunity to speak. But while I have the floor, I just wanted to make everyone aware of what I believe has really went from something that, to me, was very small, and it's really grown to a, what appears to be, I guess in a lot of people's eyes, a crisis. I want to make it very clear, the town of Elton has never killed a cat, we never murdered cats, and that's a fact. We've never done that. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm embarrassed for anyone to even look at this board up here and say to us that we have killed cats and murdered cats. I'm embarrassed by that. That has never happened. But along with that, I want to stress that our agreement, let's take all that away, but I also want to say that the town of Elton had a resident of the town. And I want to stress that our number one priority to our residents of our town of Elton is their public health and welfare is all of our number one priority. We had a resident of our town, one resident. We have actually had, I guess in the past, other residents that have came to the town of Elton and said, listen, I've got some cats in the area. I don't want them. I don't want them in my area. What can you do to help? I will tell you that the town of Elton did what we would have done for any resident of our town. Our first call was to the agency that the county government has contracted to help take care of pets. So we contacted the Buddy for Life. In fact, our resident contacted the Buddy for Life first, and they said they don't take cats. We contacted the Buddies for Life, and we were told, yeah, we do take cats, but we're full at this point. So our resident came back, still had the same concerns and issues. We discussed it. I asked the customer, our resident, are you feeding the cats? You know, they're your cats. After you feed them for a couple days, you're the one responsible for the cats. And he said, yes, I'm feeding them. So we figured we needed a second, another way to, if this happened again, what are we supposed to do? And I can tell you, we looked at a lot of different programs. We looked at the TNR program, we looked at the, from a trap neuter return to a trap neuter repair, relocate, to all these different scenarios. We were well educated on this. We tasked our town administrator to take a look at this for us, under his recommendation, and we all agreed here at the board, that we were gonna take, our first call was gonna be to the Buddies for Life. First and foremost call was the Buddies for Life. Our second call, if Buddies for Life couldn't take it, we were gonna call the Eastern?
Eastern Shore Animal Rescue.
The Eastern Shore Animal Rescue Facility. That was our second call. Our agreement, in our terms, which no one out here certainly knew what our agreement was, was for them to, for us to capture the cat, take it to them, and if it was a, we were told that if it was any way they could adopt that animal, it would be adopted. We weren't doing the killing. Now you may say, okay, well, you guys trapped it and you took it there. You're gonna do the killing of that animal. That was our direction. And the reason why we were going that way is that was an isolated incident from a resident asking us to take action. The town of Elton has no desire to trap cats in our community. We will not trap colonies of cats and take them away from anyone else there may be. It's just not what we're gonna do. We've never done it. That's not our goal, that's not our direction. Our direction was, we were helping a resident of our town that did not want us to trap neuter and return it back to him. That was the bottom line. Now, since all this has happened, we have educated ourselves a little bit better. I can tell you, we have educated ourselves. I spoke to a couple great people that said they would, if we could trap it, neuter it, they would relocate it and try to get it into another colony for us. Well, that's, I'm satisfied with that, but I'm not sure if that's the same thing with the plan that wants to be put in place with us. But I also want to stress, an agreement is when both parties sign the agreement. I am happy, or not necessarily happy to say, but the agreement was never signed. The town of Elton has no agreement with the?
Eastern Shore.
Eastern Shore Animal, we do not have an agreement. So there is no agreement, and it's not an agreement to sign, so there is none. And I can tell you that they don't want to be part of this deal. So there is no agreement. I kind of apologize that everyone's here to hear that, but we're without a program. Not to say that, I don't think that anyone on this board would be willing to make any agreements on which direction we go here in the future, but I think we have been educated. We've looked at all the plans in place, good, bad, or indifferent. I know more about cats today than I've ever done in my life, and I thank everyone for that. I really do. So I wanted to get that out there under my business, and everyone's gonna have an opportunity to say a few words about this when we get to the public comment time. But I want to stress, there is no agreement with the Eastern Shore group, and there's no action from the town of Elton in killing or murdering cats. And I can tell you, I don't know how many times I've been threatened, quite frankly, over the last week from some emails.
What names?
I have, I received probably a total of 26 to 30 emails, and I think that out of all those, there may have been one from the town of Elton. So social media does a great job of getting the message out, but where it starts at is here, and I'm glad to see a lot of people here tonight. And I hope that there is residents from the town of Elton that want to talk about the program, quite frankly. With that, Mary Jo, you're on.
Well, I know a lot of people have a lot to say, so I'm gonna be brief. I just want to thank everyone out there who volunteered, because I see several of you here, for the Color Vibe that happened last weekend. It was a great event. I thought I'd have the final count for tonight, but there were so many that registered that day, he didn't have it to me by today. We're looking at about 2,800 people right now, and it is on for next year. So I just want to thank all the volunteers and everyone involved to make that a success, to bring people to our town. And that's all I have, so everyone could have their chance.
Thank you.
I want to speak on behalf of the Parks and Rec, 4th of July. I want everybody to be, get yourself prepared for 4th of July coming up, which will be held down at Meadow Park. Summer camp will start on June 15th. So if you haven't registered your child for the summer camp, please do so, go to Parks and Rec and register them. And then basketball camp will start 7th to 16th, July 16th through July 13th, that's Monday through Thursday, from 8 to 12. And they want me to remind everyone that dance camps will be going through the whole summer. So if you want to register your child for dance camp, they're open for registration. Also, when I have the floor, I just want to make my stake on the cat situation. I have responded to about maybe six phone calls. I don't get into the social media stuff, because I teach my kids that always on air, day and night, that sometimes you say something, it might come back the wrong way, so I don't do that. So people that I did talk to about this situation knows where I stand with my vote on this. Basically, like the mayor stated, that our concern was to try to find a place for the cats, nothing to do with utilizing them, but yet find a home for them, get someone that does that work, which I don't have that capability and that knowledge, but like the other mayors, I learned more about cats this month than I think I've ever, ever heard. And one thing I will say that, I'm glad to see so many people here that have the care and the concern for the cats, and I hope we can come up with a good solution so we can help both the cats and the people.
Thank you. Charles?
Again, I want to thank the administration for attending Elton High School on last Thursday. We went to Elton High School, we talked to an AP class, first period of first block. We returned, we talked to the ninth graders, the last block, and basically, we gave them an obituary of Elton Town Government. It was well received, and again, we did a good job on part of the town of Elton. And Mayor, I want to thank you for the budget that you presented. It was very thorough and very extensive, and to you put some time. And of course, there's gonna be some question before it's voted upon, but thank you anyway. The cat situation, glad to see so many people here to, I guess, to give a response. Obviously, we don't know what direction we're gonna take. Certainly, it's always good to have some external communication to give us. Michelle, I want to thank you, because even though there was a misconception, and we're not here every day, you stood instead for us while we were absent. You also went to the media and explained what had happened. It was a misconception, and hopefully tonight, we can come to some type of resolve. And that's it.
Thank you. DJ?
Let me start with the cat situation first. And I am also excited to see everybody here. We're all passionate about animals, and obviously, it was a situation that was presented to us. And I, for myself, wasn't aware of TNR and the other TNR, and oh my God, so many different things that you can do. And immediately, I am on social media, and immediately, I was encouraged in a very aggressive manner to communicate with some people. And I'm very thankful of that, because I took the time to go and visit some people, go talk to people, ask people to mail things to me, to email things to me, and I responded. And for me, that's what I asked to do as an elected official. I did get a letter, and I'm not gonna say who it's from, because I didn't ask to break their anonymity, but they are a caregiver of two cats called Stumpy and Batman. And as far as I'm concerned, those cats will be just fine. And if everybody follows me on social media, they know exactly where I stand, along with the rest of the board, that we're not looking to exterminate or eradicate any type of colonies. It's not in any of us. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is today, we all, and it was extremely encouraging, thought-provoking, was a homeless coalition that happened today. And there was, the mayor arranged it, the whole board was there, Lewis was there, the tenants and the police chief, and pillars of the community were there to talk about the issue that we had with homeless. And it was about an hour long. There was some great discussion, I thought, of some encouraging ways that we can help the homeless, help businesses, taxpayers with this situation. And I'm not sure when the next meeting's going to be. I had to leave early because I had another meeting.
There was none assigned.
There was none assigned. Hopefully, within the next month, I would assume, right? Once a month. And then we'll be able to report back to you of exactly what's going on. But it was, like I said, the amount of people that turned out, and there were some people that did not see eye to eye, but I think everybody was in agreement that as long as we can agree, somewhere around 80%, that we can definitely move forward and hopefully take care of this thing. Also wanted to say, the mayor brought up that I didn't send him any emails. And the reason I didn't do that is anything that I want to do and say, I want it to be as transparent as possible, has nothing to do with my peers or anything like that at all. It's just my personal belief. Just like the emails I send back and forth, there's no disclaimer at the bottom of my emails, this is private information. If I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna say it out loud, I'm gonna say it to you. And I'd like to know where my peers stand, because I honestly don't know. I was here in last year's talk about the budget with former Mayor Fasano, and I know that there was some apprehension about adopting his budget, and I don't know why. But I would like to know where everybody stands. And as far as the ordinance for the Guarantee Program, Louis, the, an ordinance is being developed right now, but as a board, don't we have a say in what that ordinance is supposed to say?
If you give me your input into it, I certainly would.
Okay.
I can't tell you what to say, though. I can only?
I understand that. I guess, I didn't even know an ordinance was being developed.
Speak up.
Sorry, I didn't know that an ordinance was being developed.
No, it's probably?
Yeah?
Your brochure set a speech.
And Louis, what I wanted to do was to create a, we need to get something on paper. And once that gets on the paper, then that'll give us all an opportunity to tweak it in any manner that we would want to tweak it. Until we get it on paper, I could get here and, until you can see the plan per se, all I can do is talk about it. So I instructed Louis to move forward with?
A draft.
A draft for us to take a look at.
All right. And I saw the initial report on the water study. When are we all meeting?
August workshop.
August workshop? All right.
Be the second meeting in August?
The second one will be in August.
All right. So that is?
August the 12th.
All right. All right, thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, DJ. There was two things that I had forgotten to mention during my report. We, Public Works just received the seven bike racks, so we're gonna be putting bike racks throughout the town. And also, we had the preview meeting yesterday on the road restoration program, so there's some roads being identified, or we've already identified those, so that's moving forward. And I think we had quite a few people take a look at that. Very good. All righty, I've got a whole list of people that would like to say a few words tonight. And I'd ask to keep it fairly brief, if you could. Once again, I'll never cut anyone off, but when we, most of the discussion is about TNR, and I think once we hear it once, I don't think we need to hear it again. You can either say, yeah, you're in favor or not in favor, whatever they think. But first, we got Pat, Pat Bruch and Patty Barton. Are you coming on down, or did they leave?
No, I'm here. Patty left, but I'm in there.
All right, come on down. 205 West Pulaski Highway. And there is some seats up front, if anyone would like to sit down.
Hey Patty, could you turn that mic like this? It's directional, thank you.
And I would have, I'm glad you came up, because we are having the cleanup at Hollinsworth Manor on Cow Lane on Saturday, starting at? Manor on Cow Lane on Saturday, starting at what time?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, and I will be there, 9:00 AM.
That's wonderful. Here, I will also be there.
Yeah, I like my hot dogs. Well done.
No problem. I'll make sure that they're nice and wet for you.
All right. Very good.
Okay. So with that said, we're making progress on that. Why I'm here today is, first of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor. I messaged you that I needed to know the progress on the homeless because I was having severe itch issues in the back. And I got a response in about 45 minutes. And an officer walked in, and he's back there. And he smiled at me, and he said, "Did you make a phone call?" I said, "No." But he had told me Chief had sent him down. And then the next day, at that engagement, and Chief was out back, they said, "Oh, there's a police officer down there with a white shirt on." I said, "Okay, that's Chief." I, for the last several days, have, since they've been out there on a constant basis, we have no problems back there. They're gone. They don't come near my buildings, and it's been awesome for the children there, for the tenants there. It's really changing. It's making a wonderful difference. And I really appreciate the officer in the back. I don't really know his name, but he's awesome.
Sergeant Joffe.
Oh, Joffe. You gotta love that guy.
We do love it.
And thank you for, Chief, for coming down to the project itself and looking it over and taking care of it with his officers. And thank you to you for following up on my message.
Thank you.
I wasn't really trying to be ignorant or anything. I was just wanting to know what the progress was. Other than that, we're moving forward at West End Gardens and also at Hollingsworth Manor. We're trying to clean up the best we can. I've been working with the police departments, the state police, sheriffs, and anyone else that I can work with. And if somebody doesn't like it, they can come visit me at West End Gardens because we need to clean up our neighborhoods.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have Ms. Patricia Ayers at 110 Michigan Court Northeast would like to come say a few words.
Thank you, gentlemen, ma'am. I'm the one who started the petition. I went by what I read in Cecilwick, and it upset me immensely. I'm the Cat Lady on the corner. That's what they call me. I feed three colonies.
Can you pull that a little closer to you? Thank you.
I feed three colonies of cats all around Leekside. Chesapeake Feline Association gets grants, and they got a grant for 15 cats. So they bought them, made, took all the cats, caught them, neutered them, returned them. We don't have any mice problem anymore. The cats are feral. They won't let you pet them, but they're there. And the kids are happy.
So it's been a successful program for you?
Very successful. And I highly recommend Dr. Carletti and Chesapeake Feline Association and Buddy for Life. So if you want to look into those three, I mean, they've been wonderful. I want to apologize that I got some feedback from Hollywood on you guys. I didn't mean to.
I thought they would be here. I was hoping for the Buggy Twins. You get me?
I didn't mean to. I didn't mean for it to go that far. I got over 3,000 signatures, and it just shows that there's more than one crazy cat lady.
Listen, I applaud you for your passion, and I do applaud you for getting that going. And, you know, it's great that you have that passion beyond you to make things like that happen. And it shows you the power of social media, how quickly it can go. Good, bad, or indifferent, and I'm not saying that this was bad. The only thing that I continue to say, I was getting calls from that and emails, I want to stress, none of these members of the board or anyone in the town that I'm aware of has ever killed a cat, and I'm certainly not a murderer.
Again, I said, I went by what Cecilwick said, and, you know, we read what we want to read.
I understand.
And I apologize that y'all got feedback from the Buggy Twins and Ken Wall.
Very good.
But that being said, Vaughn Cole was the one who came up with the idea to start the petition, so I just want to give kudos to her.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have Kayla.
Excuse me. I just want to air Cat Lives Matter.
Thank you. And you know, this is actually good. I want to mention that we are on video here tonight, and everyone can look at this across the country also. If you want to take this link after we're done, you can send it across also. Kayla Christina, is she here? All right. Oh, she's with Alley Cats. And you came all the way from Gatorsburg. Wow.
Thank you. So I do work with Alley Cat Allies. We are a national organization, but right in your backyard. And part of my job is to work with municipalities to make more effective programs to deal with the community cat population. What I hope to do in this short amount of time, I know you guys are all pros, it sounds like, but give you some insight as to what the most effective program would be. Like you said, to make both better for the cats as well as the community. So trap meet return is what we advocate for. This is a system where cats already living outdoors are humanely trapped, taken to a veterinarian to be spayed or neutered, vaccinated, and returned to their outdoor home. As of right now, this is the only effective way to stabilize and in here reduce the cat population. If you don't like cats, if you're concerned about rabies, if you're concerned about wildlife, the answer to that is all the same. You want less cats, and trap meet return is the only way to accomplish that. The thing that I want to point out is, when we talk about TNR, we're talking about the cats already living outdoors. So we have to think of a solution that's going to be most successful for those cats. And once TNR is in place, they're now vaccinated and safe members of the community, as well as numerous kittens, which is fabulous. If anyone has colonies, they don't like to see kittens. I wanted to touch on catching and removing because I know that was definitely something that was spoken about. And the reason that that's not a sustainable approach is, there's scientific studies known as the vacuum effect. It's studied in all mammals, including cats. If you have an area where feral cat populations thrive, that means that there are resources there. If you permanently remove that population, cats from neighboring colonies move in. They are very quick breeders, and they quickly breed to capacity. So it's pretty much an evolving door. The only way catch and remove would work is if you had a large army to catch every single cat in one string. So while, you know, it might be a temporary solution for certain individuals, it's not long term. Now, I do want to address nuisance complaints. Not everyone wants cats in their yards or their businesses, and that's certainly understandable. I brought a bunch of these brochures with me. I'm happy to give them to anyone in this room who has problems with cats. These are deterrents. These will keep cats out of your yard or your place of business, and you will be cat free. If you go the other approach and remove cats from a person's home or a person's business, that area for one reason or another, whether you have neighbors feeding or they just really like your yard, is a resource for those cats. So within at least six months, probably sooner, you will have a new cat there. So the calls are going to just essentially keep evolving, going back to the vacuum effect. What I want to stress is that I understand you have to take precaution and listen to your residents, but I don't want to take away from the long term goal. The long term goal, even for caregivers, is to stabilize and reduce the population. The only way to do that is TNR, and you can use that in combination with helping those people who do not want cats in their yard by using humane deterrents. So you can kind of help both ways, but long term, you're going to better the population. We are a short distance from you. If you have any questions, if you have any concerns, if you want to pick my brain, I would be happy to talk with anyone. This is near and dear to my heart, as I came from a community that was doing catch and remove. And I'll tell you, it doesn't work, and you're going to want to pull your hair out if you try to make that a policy. So I hope that you do adopt a trap meet return program. I know you have wonderful people here willing to help, and I'm here as a tool if you need any materials or anything at all. We're right around the corner, so thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up. I have a question.
What community was I from? Wycomago? By Ocean City, Maryland? I used to work at the shelter there.
She sent us a packet.
You, everyone has one?
Yep, I have this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Ricky Lewis, Cat Crusaders. Perryville, come on down.
Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak tonight. My name is Ricky Lewis, and I'm the director of Cat Crusaders Incorporated. Before I start, I'd like to give you a little bit of a background on who we are and kind of what we do for your community. We're a community aid organization who works with members of the community and nonprofits to provide trap meet return services to the people of Cecil County and Elton. In addition, we offer assistance with pet food, low-cost spay neuter, transport for shelter transfers, and assistance with placing adoptable pets. We're not a shelter, but we are a small network of foster homes. We, along with other volunteers from various organizations, have been doing these things in your town now for about six years. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk about what we do when we conduct TNR in Elton. Our current program for community cat assistance usually starts with a referral from a local shelter or a friend in the community. Either myself or Demac Quaid will receive a call or a message from someone who has been feeding a cat or a group of cats, but has nowhere to turn for assistance when it comes to low-cost spay and neuter, or they may be afraid to reach out to an animal control entity for fear that the animal will be trapped and euthanized, or they may even receive a fine as a result of the animals. So one of the first things we do when we touch base with these individuals is, we first assure them that we're there to help, first and foremost, and we're not going to harm the cats. We go into the situation with the intent on helping that person to not only spay and neuter, but vaccinate in order to be in compliance with county law and reduce any risk of rabies throughout the community. We meet with the property owners and explain to them the procedures in trapping and handling trapped animals. Is at this time, we educate them, and we let the person be part of the program. They help manage their own property in this way. By educating them, they will know what cat reproduction and behavior is like, and this is part of the program. This is something we provide. Traps are set for each, at each location and checked every few hours. Once trapped, each animal receives a rabies shot. They're dewormed, spayed or neutered, they're ear docked and given a tattoo on their left ear, and they're given a shot of penicillin to help in their recovery. Animals from each colony are checked for feline aids and leukemia to make sure the colony is in fact healthy to other cats and other pets.
What happens if the cat is sick?
If the cat is positive for feline aids and leukemia, typically, if there's no shelter that specializes with them, in that situation, they are terminal diseases, and we do recommend euthanasia in that situation. Leukemia can be transferred from cat to cat, and it shouldn't be out in the neighborhood in that aspect. And this helps control that by, you know, by us doing these tests and by monitoring these colonies. Once the cats have been, have recovered, they're released where they were trapped to the colony caretaker to continue their care. If domesticated animals or kittens are retrieved, they are set up in foster care for adoption. They're removed. We strive to let people know that, you know, if you have a situation, even if you have 15 kittens, we're going to help you. You know, don't be afraid to reach out. And, you know, in the future, should a cat fall ill or need assistance, the colony caretaker can call us, and they'll receive help retrapping the cat so the cat can get vet care. And we have that situation in our colony. Sometimes somebody gets a hurt foot, or somebody gets run, their tail gets run over, what have you. We hit those calls and we assist. This service has been provided to over 700 cats in Elton alone just since this, our tattoo program, our ID program started in 2011. That doesn't include TNR cats done at other low-cost clinics other than Dr. Carletti's. The tattoo program is done at a Dr. Carletti's clinics. That's just her clinic. There are many other organizations that do work with other clinics, and those cats aren't even counted on this list. So trap meet return has supported a great deal throughout the county and throughout, you know, the township. That being said, throughout that time, these services have always been sponsored by individuals or organizations, both financially and through volunteer hours, which number in the thousands. I myself dedicate two to three evenings a week doing TNR in Cecil County, and at least one night a week just in Elton. We have done this because we collectively, as a group, the people you see here tonight as organizations, know the program is the best chance, in fact, the only chance, in solving the problem of community cats. In light of that, we as active citizens serving our community were very offended by what we thought was a decision to contract with another organization to destroy the very same cats we worked so hard to sterilize and vaccinate for the good of the town and for the county. We have been working on our own with your community who prefer a no-kill solution. We have helped them for years, years now, without county and town support. We asked for an opportunity to sit down and discuss what we would offer and could offer, but were dismissed when we did not commit to removing community cats from Elton. I wish we could have had that opportunity because it may have avoided some of this here tonight for you folks and some of the frustration. You see, TNR is very dependent, and as commissioners, I need you to understand that it's very dependent upon the community's trust of its administration to not destroy the animal. If they do not, then they will ask for help. If they think you're going to destroy it, or there's a possibility even slightly, they're not going to come to you for help. It's not going to happen. And that's where the problem lies. This was very evident in the town of Charlestown before they recently publicly endorsed and funded their TNR program. The very next day after they made their press release stating that the cats would not be harmed, the phone calls just came in. It was amazing. Within two weeks, we had the colonies located within the town with the assistance of the And we had it mapped out. We had a plan, and we were ready to go. Prior to them funding the project, we, you know, we had already done over 60 cats through sponsorship of property owners and other donations. Since we started with their sponsorship in April and with the town and community support, we have done an additional 33 cats to date and removed 14 for adoption. We estimate there are approximately 25 cats left in the townships and areas to do before the township is under control for the most part, and will be a maintenance issue for, you know, as time goes, but nothing like it is before we started this program. This is, you know, a prime example of, you know, trap meet return working is a program that we implemented in Perryville Park, started, you know, eight years ago. As a result of, you know, the efforts in Perryville and the community's mentality changing and supporting TNR, we got a lot less calls coming out of Perryville these days, and we're able to concentrate more on your township. We have seen firsthand that, you know, when townships such as yours get behind TNR efforts, they've become very effective in solving the issue. We have a plan in place, and if the council, you know, would agree, we would respectfully request, you know, a work session to discuss a possible TNR program for the town. We, at that time, would be willing to discuss, you know, any logistics or specifics, including and not limited to, you know, the financial aspects and donations and the management of those donations by the township. Cat Crusaders has always offered our help as a volunteer. The people in this room are here to help you as volunteers. We've done that free of charge, and we will continue to do that for every call that comes in, if you're willing to.
Listen, as I said, I appreciate adding as another resource for us.
So, you know, we do believe that donations, especially considering the attention this has gotten, you know, will help offset some of those costs for the town of Elton, you know, maybe more than you actually think, given the attention this has received. I would like to say that making the decision to remove cats for euthanasia from a township creates an environment where people are definitely afraid to reach out for help. And taking that into consideration... And taking that into consideration, you know, if Elton is resolved, or was resolved, I should say, had been resolved in this decision, which I'm very glad to hear that you aren't tonight, I think that that would have created an atmosphere where a lot of these rescue groups would have just stopped working in your town. I didn't want to see that. We've been working for far too long and to really make this work, and we want to see it work. We're here tonight to tell you, we want to help you make this work.
Thank you.
That being said, the one resident, you know, that did make the initial call, that call came to me through the county administration. The county administrator actually knows I have a knack for this type of thing and reached out and said, you know, can you, can you check in on this for me? Right. And I did that. I did contact a gentleman, and in April we met, and I'm happy to say that he was very appreciative of what we did for him, and at this point, his colony is almost done, and we continue to provide him aid now, and he's happy with the program. I think he just needed a chance to talk to somebody to give him the exact, you know, process for him to understand it, and once he did, he was on board. Councilmen, commissioners, you know, I urge you to consider this, a TNR program. TNR does not exclude the possibility of removing a few problem cats. We do that too. We just can't commit to removing every feral cat in your town.
I understand.
And, but we're looking to help you, not only with the problem cats, but with the cats in the community that needs just a little bit of help financially or physically. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ricky. Okay, we've got a handful more, but if it's a, if we're going to continue to repeat the same, and listen, it's been great information, but maybe shorten it down just a little bit as we continue to move forward. We've got Mr. Michael Hall, come on down, Charter Hall Road, I'm not sure what town that's in.
I'm on a farm between Charlestown and Perryville.
Very good.
I'm not in that area.
Very good, sir.
How are you?
I'm doing great.
Good evening. I'd like to mention a couple of things before I get onto the kitty cats, and then I'll be back to the kitty cats. Number one, the car wash on Route 40 across from the Sunoco Station. Every single time I go there to wash my car, I am panhandled.
You're thinking in northeast though? That's northeast.
Okay.
Okay.
But it happens, there are panhandlers all over the place. I'll walk through northeast, I mean, through Elton. I spend, the reason I'm here, I'm not from your town, but I spend a lot of money in your town, the restaurants and stuff like that. And they're aggressive, and just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's northeast. Now, my house has been robbed three times, and I want to congratulate the police officers for apprehending the people, but I want to chastise the judicial system for letting them all go. My house was robbed, $17,000 one time, and I did get restitution, $1.12 a month for two years. If I collected it all, I could supersize a meal at Burger King or whatever. As far as social media is concerned, I am not on any social media thing because of mine. I'm a retired Marine, and because of my position in the Marine Corps, it's impossible for me to be on social media because it would not be a good idea. Now, about the kitty cats, I believe you that you haven't killed a cat, euthanized a cat, but what was brought out and what started everything was the idea that maybe that that was going to happen. And I can tell you, when I started out with, my girlfriend is big with trap neuter release and everything, when we started out with cats, I, six months later or so, I was able to have a small fortune. Actually, I started with a large fortune, because she takes my credit card and bids on getting cats repaired and everything. One particular one that needed a $4,000 operation, she was handling the, she was handling the auction for it, and I keep seeing her hand raised, and I'm wondering, where's that coming from? And she said, okay, it's Michael, Michael got this. So, the cats are, for these people that are involved, for everybody involved in these kitty cats, they are, they're all volunteers, bottle babies, every two hours feeding them, for weeks and weeks and weeks, every two hours. I say to people, a lot of people say, I hate cats. Well, if you hate cats, our organization's good. Any of the organizations are good because it gets them off the street. If you love cats, it's good because, and you said you've learned a lot about cats in the past, have you changed your, did you like cats beforehand?
I will tell you, I'm actually allergic to the hair of the cats and dogs, so it's, I've never been, I've never been able to show the love that I have for the pets because of that.
Do you hunt?
I do.
Well, that to me, you know, I'm not a hunter, but I'm not against hunting. But the kitty cats are God's creatures, and we absolutely love them. Everybody in here that's here for the cats love these kitty cats, and it's all volunteer. And I'm talking about calls at two or three in the morning, we're going to get a call tonight about two or three in the morning. And the money that we donate, we operate on donations only, but a lot of the donations come from, not only the time put in, but the money comes from our pockets, because we can't stand to see anything suffer, a human or an animal. And, you know, it starts with when you, when you care about something. If you can care about an animal that much, how much can you care about a person? And, you know, we do all that, but I was just upset when, when this all started, it was mentioned somewhere in the newspaper that this was a plan, and that's what got everybody riled up.
Thank you.
And it's not a plan, well, I think I have one more thing here. I want to thank the police for the job that they're doing, and I think that if, I wish I could see some money out there for, for more places to incarcerate people, and not say, the judge said to the guy that robbed my house, 21 arrests at 21-years-old, he wasn't in jail. He said, I'm going to give you a break. And I said, excuse me? He said, shut up. I said, what do you mean, shut up? I said, I have First Amendment rights. He said, not in my courtroom, you don't. And the, what do you call him, the?
Bailiff.
Not the bailiff, the state's attorney, said, shut up or you'll be in jail. I said, well, please lock me up, because if you lock me up, this will be in the newspaper. I'm going to get, I get robbed $17,000, and I'm going to jail for saying, excuse me. But anyway, please listen to these people about the kitty cats.
Here it loud and clear.
Okay. And I'm sorry I confused you all with, with the, with the.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we've got Ms. Alice Murdock.
No, I just did a trap neuter return.
Thank you. All of them, that did Ms. Alice Murdock, TNR in favor of. Okay. Oh, may I ask where you're from?
Elton area.
Elton, thank you. Mr. Tim Kirk, Two Circle Drive, Elton.
Oh, Timmy.
I can ask that question.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yes, I said to you.
Boy, thank you. I didn't want to say the name without asking.
We actually.
And your name, ma'am?
Julie Ryan.
I'm sorry, this is Julie, I'm Tim.
Hi, Julie.
We are volunteers. We really aim to assist the dogs rescue, but technically.
Speak into microphone, please. Thank you.
We are simply a group of local volunteers that were already feeding the cats locally. It kind of got together for the schedule, too. We do three colonies. Subsea Batman are one. One is a lovely historic location located right near Bridget, which could become a very nice place, a sanctuary perhaps for them. We have a stable core population. We do have a lot of people dropping cats off. There's a local pet store that calls us when they seek kittens, we can drop them and deal with that on a daily basis here lately. We've got three at home right now. But we do have, we keep track of our core population. Each month, each cat, Subsea Batman, I think somebody got JoJo, is listed. We work, Dr. Carletti, spays and neuters, and always has been wonderful with that. Any cat we take, if it needs medical attention, or is sick, or is hurt, she's been very wonderful. One thing I do want to talk about, we had a complaint from a man off of White Mo Road in the neighborhood there, I don't remember the name.
Castleton.
This is Katie, she's now adopted, and this is Tigger, he is now neutered and removed from that area. They were actually cats that people had moved out and left in that neighborhood that wandered over to our colony for the food resources. That complaint has been solved by us. That same week, we watched the meeting and we went out and got them. They are now gone, and that situation was resolved by us.
Thank you. I had a great conversation with Tim the other day, and he educated me quite well.
And we are willing to work with you. We have signed up. The one thing that upset, I think, a lot of people about the contract with the eastern shore, the adoptable cats, that's fine, but ferals, a feral in the shelter is a dead cat. They cannot live in a shelter, they're not socialized, even when you trap them, they just bang themselves in the cage if they're truly feral. They would have no hope for adoption. Where would those cats go, I believe is the question. Euthanasia simply because they're not socialized is not fair. They live in family and colony groups, they have their own territory. They also stop other cats from coming in, because cats are territorial and they don't want to share their food, and nobody says, hey, come on in my tub and share my food. So, our colony is stable, except for people. And one thing I did want to add, homeless people there often have pets when they become homeless, and they are afraid, like Ricky was telling you, to reach out because they're afraid they won't get their cats back. And we need to find a way to maybe help them too, so that we can control what's coming in, because we do have a lot of homeless out behind some of our colonies. And some of them care for the cats, some of them tear our tubs up, but we work with it.
Well, we do, we do take care of 56, seven days a week, every day, twice a day. She feeds evenings, I feed mornings, and so far, it's been working pretty good out there. Like I say, the population of the cats go up and down because of people dropping off cats, and maybe, like Julie says, one of the issues could be, they are afraid that they won't get their animals back. But we trapped probably 13 last week.
New kittens, people, there's a pet store in that strip mall behind there, people feed, oh, they'll be okay, there's people that'll take care of them. Well, you know, we do, but it's constant this time of year, but nothing's been, what we have been doing, trap neuter return at this colony for four to five years now, nothing from our cats, Subsea Batman, aren't breeding, their JoJo's fixed, they're all, but it's the new ones that people drop that we have problems with. When we see them, we get them, you know, but we don't always see everything right away. The other thing I did want to add is that area, that historic area that could still be restored and lovely there at that ancient haunted house, does have a stable population, which would be nice if we had something like Perryville where we had a fence and a, you know, let people know that it's, you know, for their safety. We do have people that don't like them that generally we don't want to bring up, but cause troubles from time to time for the cats and for us. We've all had problems with people when we were feeding late, and we've had issues. But generally, this is a picture of that historic location, how we feed. We also do behind another grocery store and behind that same area we were just speaking of, and there is 23, 20, and 13, three colonies separately. And every cat, every month, is recorded, marked, they've all been neutered and vaccinated. So, we do maintain them well.
Very good.
I just wanted to let you know that TNR has been working silently through a lot of volunteers and a lot of different groups for many years. Dr. Carletti has been a big, big part of this, and is probably responsible for thousands of cats that we don't have running around already because of TNR that we have been doing on our own with volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Brianna Low, Low?
Sorry.
Is it Level?
Level.
And 121 Justice Way, I think you're in Elton.
I am.
All right.
Hi, I am a resident, I've grown up here, and I am not a trapper, I am not a caregiver, I am just a person that saw some cats and figured I would become educated on it. And the one thing I can say, the tipping point for me, is when I realized that feral cats are not owned cats, just because you feed them doesn't make them yours. Even if you have a cat in your house, I think sometimes you can feel that way, that they own you, right? But they are unowned, and that in fact that they are community cats, and so that makes them part of the community, and so it's our job to help them be good neighbors. And so that kind of flipped a switch in my head and made me understand the issue a little better. And I do understand that at the heart of this conversation, I think, was the town's desire to be responsive to its constituents. And so you heard a complaint, you wanted to do something, and now you're open-minded as to how to best handle that. And so I know that we've talked a lot about trap neuter return, and so I just hope that whatever is decided, that the town does its best to educate citizens when they call, and they might have a complaint about what will happen to the cats, because I think it's important for people to understand that if a cat is removed, if it is taken to a shelter, even if it's relocated, that it's not always going to work, that the outcome might not always be positive. And so I think education is at the heart of everything, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Lissenberg, come on down. We introduced Bob earlier at 1051, not late. I think he is double-dipping here.
He might have double-dipped, but I don't have the stack. First, I want to say it's been nice to be able to speak to the mayor on the mayor's budget and get answers from the mayor. And speaking about Hoppy, I happened to have the opportunity at quarter after five last Wednesday morning, coming across the bridge, and he was there waiting to people that time in the morning. So, maybe Charlie, you can take him out there at 5:30 in the morning? $70,000 on a sidewalk, is that for Methodist Church?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Last Friday, with these, these functions you have on weekends, Saturday and Sunday, shouldn't the, the, the people that are putting the project on, shouldn't they be the ones to be putting up the snow parking signs instead of the public works? Why is the public works putting the signs up for somebody else? I mean, there's two guys from the public works, one particularly is, he shouldn't be, he's, he's far better qualified to be putting signs up. I think it ought to be a situation where whoever's having the function has to put the signs up, not the town.
That's a good comment.
Before you had, this was a while back, right after you were elected, that each councilman was going to report on different departments, like Mary Jo was going to do the town, so forth, and Earl was doing the public works, Charlie was going to do the police department, and DJ was going to do the public works. And most of your reports, it normally will give a report on something, but I don't remember Charlie ever talking anything about the, the reports, anything about the town, or DJ, can you enlighten us on what you've done with the public works? I mean, looking into their work habits or whatever?
The.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, this is something that was brought up, and we're going to, we're going to do this, and it hasn't, hasn't really happened.
I know, I've been down there a couple of different times with the oversight of the town administrator, and there's, there's been issues, and I know that those issues are being discussed and resolutions are being discussed also. I know that there's different times we've, we've had game plans put in place and they fall by the wayside to only be put in place again. I can tell you, I'm keeping a close eye on it. I haven't been down there recently, in the last, I'd say, two weeks, maybe three weeks. recently, in the last, I'd say, two weeks, maybe three weeks. But I know the town administrator's been down there. I know the mayor's been down there. But there are issues.
Well, this is one question, but they are working to try to get it resolved.
Collectively.
Yeah.
We're working.
Yes. Okay, good. I guess the last thing was with the WIMCO.
Oh, WIMCO.
WIMCO, which it may be.
Yes.
Are they going to do a study on the road, over on Blue Ball Road, as far as sidewalks are concerned?
Yes, we're going to have to get it removed over there.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
Okay, just...
What you talking about?
Very good.
Thanks, man.
I mean, it's a while back that a building was built. It was required by the town to put a sidewalk from that building to Blue Ball Road, which didn't make any common sense whatsoever because the traffic is on the other side of the road where the housing is. But the town regulations and it was never done. And I think it should be resolved that it should be waived, not have to be done. If you're going to do it, it should be on the other side of the street where you do have pedestrian traffic. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And I think the police, basically in the meetings, I think the work they have done has spoken for them. I've certainly been with the chief and tenant in many meetings with the administrative alliance. We talk on the phone, we send emails, a lot of information. It's very discretionary, but they certainly would tell you that I'm concerned by that.
Okay. Well, maybe what I'm getting at, you know, it's...I imagine it's probably a little hard to do, but in the Rising Sun Herald, every week, they have a report of how many arrests they have for certain different things and so forth. I mean, I know these guys are busy. I mean, there's no doubt about, all police departments are busy. But I think the public would not have a right to know, but maybe is inquisitive enough to know how many arrests you're having for drug trafficking. And there, again, they're making the arrests, but the judicial system's failing everybody in here.
And they do supply that information. That'd be up to the mayor if he wants me to dispense some of that information for a meeting, but I'll add to it today.
I think we've been putting it on social media, some of the...there's been some of the reports, but...
Yeah, some of our profile things, we place on Facebook.
But not everyone can see it. I think you have a valid point. We need to get it out.
But we bring something.
Thank you, Bob. And last but not least, I got Mr. Ron Walter. He's on the list here.
We've got a lady.
Yeah, we'll let her talk her mouth.
It's gonna be very long. Rob Wardrop, 242 Douglas Street. It's been one year ago, close to it, I first sat down there and I told you about the nude broom. You remember the story?
Yes.
I got old. And it's not sweeping like it should be. I do not believe that this town is not in one accord on this budget deal. Rob, this is not about you. This is about this town.
What do you suggest?
I suggest you do some more research and so forth before you go ahead with this, is what I suggest. Okay? Now, I can...you have all the empathy for me and the world on cats. I wish to pass away, put $9,000 on a cat that we had. So, I love cats, but I'll tell you something I love more. That's my children. Are you aware that the state of Maryland allows a sex offender to live homeless wherever he chooses to live in this place where we live? Are you aware of that? If you're not, you are now, cowboy. I helped people. You know that. I helped a person, turned him on. I decided because of certain circumstances, found out he's a sex offender from New Jersey. My name is in the paper. My address is in the paper that he lives at my house and he does not live at my house. So, I had to go down and talk to Mr. Cunyan. I came to talk to the chief about this, okay? And when I found out, when I found out, I am ticked off. This is about my children, for God's sakes, my grandchildren, and every member that is in this place tonight, children are susceptible to having a sex offender, somebody that may be a Jeff...what's his name? Jeffrey Dahman? Come on, cowboy. That ain't for Elton, not for me. And I'm mad about it.
How did he get in your home?
I invited him. I had no idea it was a sex offender. I helped him. I helped. He needed a tar for his vehicle. I got that tar for him. I help people. I've helped them to the point that I'm not helping no more. Okay? Because it's not about me. You know what I'm about. You all know what I'm about. But I am appalled to that fact because that street I live on belongs to this town and he can park right in front of my house if he wants to and there's nothing they can do about it, not a thing. So, I'm asking tonight, I want, in where I live, in Elton Village, like you're doing over here on Buttonwood, the same thing. I need to permit that...had that house for 30 years and you got to fight with someone else because they could just pull in on not being respectful. That's all I ask of someone is be respectful and trustful to me. And I'll do the same in turn.
Very good.
Case closed.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
I see Mrs. Clark. Would you like to say a few words?
I didn't say.
Come on down.
Oh, good.
Come on down. I know Mrs. Clark lives on North Street.
I'm the mayor of North Street.
That's right.
Fifty-seven years, the mayor. And my dead rights are stacked.
All righty. I wasn't going to say anything, but I am now. I don't believe that the persons here know the amount of dedication and hard work and money that goes into caring for the cats. I have two at home. Either you like them or you don't like them. They get on your car, they trap your car up. You get out to weed your flower garden, cats have been there. They can be a mess. But the couple that was sitting in front of me, I'm kind of a benefactor in buying cat food for them. They also buy. In the wintertime, when the snow is yea deep, the gentleman has his shovel. Oh, the cat colony is out by the acne and the sunsetion. Mr. John Peters is the manager of the Big Elk Mall. He and I talk frequently. He is very thankful to Mr. Tim for cleaning up all the debris and trash that is left there by the thoroughfare that goes back there. When the snow is yea deep, he takes a shovel. He shovels out to where the cats have their boxes or strolling along. When the weather is hot, water is carried. It's dedication and no one realizes the amount of hard work. When it's pouring down rain, they're out there putting in it. And I just...I get up at four in the morning, look here, I am sitting here. Dr. Mindy Carlotta was here, but she left. As Ms. Julie said, the cats go down to her if they're sick, if they have a broken leg. They get all their medical needs, they're neutered, and they have a health record for every cat. You don't see those cats out there, do you?
Actually, I can tell you, I did drive by the other day and I saw one.
Okay.
I saw one.
Okay. When the weather's nice, they're out on that cement, all laying out there sunny. They don't bother any...they're healthy. They're not in a residence. They're not bothering anymore. And thank you all.
Thank you.
And I called Mr. Van...and I guess I balled him out pretty good on the front end.
That was...
That's all I have to say.
That was one call, yes.
Vote for me, a stare on your face.
Very good. Well, very good. We are going to close this meeting, but we do have to have a closed meeting to talk about real estate. Real quickly, and I promise I'll only be no more than five minutes. So, I'd like to ask everyone to exit the meeting. This meeting is adjourned. I do need a motion for the closed meeting. Motion by Mary Jo and a second by Charles. All in favor. It will only be a couple of minutes.